This special call meeting in the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Let us stand for invocation and the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We're grateful with the opportunity to be here tonight to conduct the business for the town of Richlands. We pray that all we do will be to your glory and to your honor and for the best interest of all the people that we affect. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council and everyone present. Okay, before us, we have an agenda. Fish it out. Anyway. We have an agenda. Thank you. And I would ask that council, I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
Okay. Jan makes the motion and Laura seconds. Is there any discussion on this motion to approve the agenda as presented? There may no discussion. I would ask a roll call vote. Please, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, council. The agenda is approved. The first item on our agenda, we're on row number three, is the budget work session. So I will turn this over to Jason for an introduction. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, mayor. One of the things I wanted to mention right off the get up is on, I believe is on page forty-five is where the town manager section is. You look at actually page forty-seven, there's an inclusion of a COLA for the town manager on that. That should be removed and put back to one hundred fifty thousand. That will be done. That fifteen thousand will be pushed towards plow and spreader for our trucks so that we have an additional plow and spreader in the, in the next year's budget.
Jason, I'm sorry. I just got to the page. Would you mind just telling me what, on page forty-seven?
Yes, sir. On page forty-seven, at the very top, you'll see salary and wages.
Yes, sir.
And you'll see that has a budget of one hundred and sixty-five thousand. That should be one hundred and fifty. Fifteen thousand will be moved from that line item to the public works equipment line to be able to purchase a spreader and a plow for our F-550. That's a truck that doesn't need a CBL driver. And so we'll have an extra plow for next year's snow season.
Thank you.
Outside of that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have in front of you. A couple of different documents that we wanted to make available to council. One is a regional rate comparison. We have selected Abington, Bluefield, Lebanon, Marion, Tazewell, and the Tazewell PSA to be able to compare our rates with. If you look at that, different towns use different ways of being able to set their water and sewer rates up. For example, the Tazewell PSA charges you one rate for the first thousand gallons that you purchased and then a different rate for the additional thousands of gallons that you purchased. What I've tried to do in the one, two, three, four, fifth column is to be able to get to an apples-to-apples comparison of what a thousand gallons of water actually costs for the town of Richland citizens versus the other area citizens. And so very quickly, you can look, right now with the proposed budget, you have a proposed rate of four dollars and twenty-nine cents. That is less than half of the nearest closest competitor in, almost less than half than Marion. That is at eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Lebanon is at nine dollars and thirteen cents. Everybody else is well north of ten dollars. Tried to do the same with the sewer rate. Again, sewer is a little bit different. Again, Lebanon is changing a little bit of a different scale for that. They're charging nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents for the first four and a half thousand gallons of water, sewers that you're dealing with. That puts them down a little bit at four dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's comparable to what our water rate is. But our sewer rate, because we made that adjustment mid-year this year and went very heavy on that rate because that was necessary to be able to move forward with the sewer project, we're still, we're higher, but we're still lower than just about everybody else short of Lebanon in that point in time. We're seven dollars and sixty-one cents is the proposed rate. That is less than the eight sixty-nine that Bluefield is charging, the eight fifty-nine that Marion, Marion is charging, and the fourteen dollars and eighty cents that the Tazewell PSA is charging. Again, on the trash pickup, we went Lebanon, excuse me, Abington is at thirty dollars. Lebanon is at nine. But they use part of their property tax to subsidize their municipal solid waste pickup. Marion is at seventeen. Tazewell is currently at fourteen, and we are projected to go to fifteen with the rate increase on that. Wanted to be able to give those comparisons because I understand we're in a region. We have, we're competing regionally for citizens, for businesses. And so if I'm a business owner or a citizen that's looking to move to this area and I'm concerned about water rates or sewer rates, I'm going to look at this. We, we deal very well with our surrounding communities. Again, the sewer is a little bit higher, but again, we also did a three dollar increase on our sewer back in November. More than happy to answer any questions about that. The other piece that I provided for you is just a little bit of history on our cost of living adjustments. Again, in FY twenty nineteen, the town gave zero percent increase. The state provided five. Inflation at that time was two point three percent. This was pre-pandemic. So again, inflation was not as much of an issue at that point in time. And FY twenty was when we moved into the heart of the pandemic. Again, the town provided a zero percent cost of living adjustment. The state provided three. Inflation was at one point four. We have to remember, before inflation got real out of control, it dropped because for about six months in calendar year twenty twenty, we didn't leave our homes. And so that was the reason why the inflation has dropped at that point in time to one point four. But if you look at the next year, the town gave a two percent raise, state gave five, inflation was at seven. It neared nine percent at that point in time. Twenty-two, you gave five percent, so did the state. Inflation was at six point five. In twenty-three, the town gave a three percent raise, the state gave a five percent. Inflation was at three point four. For last year, you gave a three percent. The state gave a five percent raise. For this year, proposed, I am proposing a five percent to catch up from some of those lacks of raises. And the state cost of living adjustment is four percent and inflation is at three point five percent. What we would like to do long term with regard to increases is to be able to match either with the state benchmark or with the CPI with the inflation benchmark is for a COLA. I'm working right now with my HR director to be able to put in place a performance review process. That is the basis by which you do a merit increases, is to be able to see, did they do a good job? Are they doing what we're asking them to do? Are they showing up on time? Are they doing the things that are asking and going above and beyond? That's where we look to do a merit increase. The COLA increase really is so that the employee can go and buy the same Diet Pepsi next year that he's buying right now and not have that eat into his rent or his car payments or any of the other things that he may do. It's to be able to keep up with inflation. The, the box of goldfish that you bought last year is going to cost you about two percent more on average, if the Fed gets their inflation at their right spot, to be able to do that. So the goldfish are going to cost two percent more. You provide a two percent rate wage increase so that your employees are able to keep pace with where inflation is. The merit increases are based upon job performance. That's where we need to get to. The world's gotten a little lazy coming out of the pandemic, and we've just given COLA raises where really what we needed to look at was COLA with merit. That's what was in place pre-pandemic. We have to get back to that. And so the town's working right now. Our staff is working to be able to get our performance review process in place. We hope that by next year, we're ready to be able to do that. We're just not in that space yet to be able to do performance reviews at the way that they're necessary to be completed to be able to do merit increases. That is the rationale for the five percent. It is really about a two and a half to three percent COLA raise with a two percent merit to try to catch up from some of the years where we weren't able to provide raises. The last thing that you have in front of you is a, is a rate plan. I believe this is dated. I don't think they have their newest rate plan out there, but this is from the PSA. Again, this is where I just want you to be able to see what other regional municipalities, excuse me, regional utilities are doing. And where they have regular rate increases that are not massive, again, I believe if I'm looking at this correctly, that the, for the first thousand gallons, you're going up from twenty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents to twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents. I don't do math in my head very well, but that's about eighty-six cents that they're going up. That's going to account to about a two, maybe a three dollar increase per month for your average citizen if they're using large amounts of water. This is where we want to be able to get those rate increases. When you did your rate increase in November, you went up nearly twice on your sewer rate at that point in time. That's why you had citizens call, call me and want to talk to me about what the rates were and how they had doubled. You went from around four dollars and some change to seven dollars and some change. Nearly doubled. This prevents you from having to do that doubling because what will happen is what inevitably happens in every municipality is if you don't give raises and you don't do rate increases, you eventually get to a place where you have large upgrades or you have a revolt within your, your employees, and you either have to go back and do seven, eight, nine percent wage increases to catch up from those time periods, or you have to do what you did on your rates and go up three dollars at one time. That hits somebody in their pocketbook. For a family that uses three thousand gallons of water per month, that can be upwards of a ten dollar per month increase, the increase you did in November. What we're looking at right now, again, accounts to about six dollars and fifty cents all in. That's with the trash, the water, the electric, and the sewage. We're dropping property tax rates that will, for a family that has a two hundred thousand dollar home, will save four dollars a month. Now, not everybody is a homeowner, and I know that, that not every person is going to fall into this, but for your average citizen that has a home and has utilities and uses a normalized amount of water and sewer, your increase for the town of Richlands is going to approximately be two dollars and fifty cents per month for next year. And for that, we are looking at doing a pool. We're looking at bringing on firefighters. Looking at trying to build a fire station. We're looking at trying to hot up on some of our salaries so we can be competitive in the market. And we're trying to get processes and procedures in place so that the town can be able to move forward efficiently and effectively into the future. With that, I will quit talking and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Council, we have a lot before us. And so I will open the floor for any questions from the council, from Jason or members of our staff.
Does it matter what order? Can we just?
I think whatever that you would like. Just always say the page, Jan, so we can follow. Thank you, or anybody else. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I really only have one question, and I kind of had to struggle to find a question, but, because this is so well put together. But the garbage collection, is this already assuming the increase in here?
Yes, ma'am. The, the revenue that's included in this, it does include the increase. If the increase was not included, we would have to reduce our revenues, and we wouldn't be able to move forward with the purchase of a new trash truck next year.
Thank you. That's all I can.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, other questions, members of council?
I have a question on page eighty-five for clarification purposes. Water quality testing increased from four thousand four hundred twenty-four to sixteen thousand. Is that due to more water testing or increasing rate for that?
Thank you. What number is that, Jan?
Page eighty-five.
Yeah, I got, is it a count?
It's down.
It's five, six, zero, one, five, oh. It's down almost at the bottom.
One, five, okay. Thank you. I've got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman, that, that is one of the few lines that we kept at a, at a raised level. The sixteen thousand is what has been budgeted over the past few years. We kept it at sixteen thousand because we know that we're getting ready to go into a water, a water upgrade process. There's going to be a large amount of testing that we're going to have to do as we go through that. And so we, we assume that we're going to raise that up. If we get through this year and we're still at the five thousand mark that we've been spending historically, that'll be dropped in next year's budget.
Okay. Then on page thirty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
On the concession collection. It goes from nineteen one forty-eight to twenty-five in the proposed budget. What has made those changes?
What's the account number on that, Jan? Do you have it?
Four, one, four, two, oh, oh.
Four, okay, thank you.
Page thirty-three.
Four, one, four, two, one, oh.
Yes, ma'am. So again, in that one, this is a very good example of this. In twenty-two, we brought in eighteen, almost nineteen thousand. In twenty-three, we brought in a little bit over nineteen thousand in that particular line. This year, we are on pace to be around twenty-four thousand dollars in bringing that in. So that was the basis to be able to move to twenty-five thousand. Again, that was one based on historical averages and on the work that Anthony is doing out of the concession stand.
Okay. And then on that same page, four, one, four, five, zero, zero. You, we go down from six thousand nine hundred sixty-eight to twenty-five hundred. And I was just curious as to what made those changes.
Yes, ma'am. Again, those are the, I'm sorry, I lost my spot there. I apologize. The, in twenty-two, we brought in just less than two thousand. In twenty-three, we brought less, just less than seven thousand. We're on pace to be at about fifty-five hundred this year. And so the thousand dollars that you see in the, the third line there, that was what was budget, being budgeted in the past. We've increased that to the twenty-five hundred, just because I'm hedging my bets a little bit on this. I, I've got a two thousand dollar marker. I've got a seven thousand dollar marker on the actuals. And so I kind of split the difference between those a little bit. Again, I, on the revenue side, I'm generally much more conservative. I don't generally like to budget more in this year than what we've actually collected in the actuals in the last, the previous year that I have audited numbers for. It, it, it sometimes can be conservative and it sometimes can be, leave a little bit of, forgive the phrasing, a little bit of meat on the bone. But this is where we know that, in the immortal words of Mike Tyson, everybody has a plan until you get punched in the face. And we know we're going to get punched in the face. And so these are the lines that we will come back and look at as we go through the year and adjust accordingly. If we have another year where we're going to bring in seven thousand dollars, we'll look and bring that up to twenty-five hundred. And then in next year's budget, you'll see it because I have a little bit more of a line projection at that point in time.
So on the swimming pool fees. Okay. Fifteen thousand, then thirteen thousand, then twelve thousand, then we're back to fifteen thousand. Is that actual numbers that people's paying to swim?
The first two numbers are, yes, sir. The fifteen thousand and the thirteen seven, those are actuals. Again, the first two numbers in your column are actuals. The twenty-two and twenty-three numbers are actuals. The twenty-four was what was budgeted last year. And then again, we've come back in and we've gone up on that because, A, we know that we're, we've, we're bringing in a little bit more than the twelve thousand that we budgeted. But we also know that this budget year will start in July and will end in June of next year. We, we believe that we will bring in a little bit more in swimming pool revenues in the start of next year because hopefully we will have a new pool at that point in time. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
And again, on any of these, I, I'm more than happy to, to adjust numbers, change them. These are, are the best estimates that we have. Again, I, I think I mentioned this a few council meetings ago. When we do this, or when I do this, the way that I've always been taught to do this, is I look at the two years of actuals that I have. That's actual money that I have in hand. There's aren't forecasts. There's aren't projections. That, that's actual audited dollars that we have on hand. So we want to start there. What have we been bringing in? Then what have we been budgeting? And in some instances, as you can see through this, we have either been budgeting over what we've been bringing in or we've been budgeting under what we've been bringing in. And most of those cases, we're trying to right-size these numbers. Again, this is where it's a little bit of an art and science. Again, science-wise, I can look at these numbers and I can do straight-line regressions. I can, I can do a whole bunch of statistical forecast models. But at the end of the day, there's also the little bit of art that's in it. We know that we're hopefully going to be looking at bringing in, building a new pool. We look to have new membership come into that pool if we're able to do it. So we're hedging our bets just a little bit by increasing that. But we really, in all actuality, could have gone higher on that because we hope to have a very good pool year next year with a new pool. But we've been conservative on that because the worst thing that can possibly happen when you have a balanced budget is for me to have been over-aggressive on the revenues and conservative on the expenditures and set myself up for where I don't bring in the revenues that I believe I was going to bring in, and my expenditures are way over. That's how you get yourself into a world of hurt where you have not enough money to pay your bills. We always want to be on the opposite side. We always want to be much more conservative on the revenue side. Not so conservative that we leave money on the table, but conservative enough that we're comfortable going into the year. And again, this is where Ronnie and his team are bringing you monthly reports to be able to, to compare that to. So as Ronnie has talked about, there's some timing issues when we have some of the revenues. But again, you can look and be able to see, at this point in time, when we get through, when we close out March, we're probably pretty, pretty close to being done with real estate taxes at that point in time. We have a fairly good understanding of what real estate tax revenue is going to be for this year. Because most people don't pay their tax, their real estate taxes in May and June. They pay them when they're due in, in January, or March, excuse me. That's the process that we want to do. We want to be a little bit more conservative on the revenues. And we want to be a little bit more aggressive on the expenditure side because we want, in that worst-case scenario, for the revenues to be a little bit higher than what we thought they were going to be, and the expenditures to be a little bit lower than what we expected it to be. And then we can come back at the end of the year, as we're going to do next month, and be able to talk to you about where you have capacity and where you have needs. And so we can close out the fiscal year strong by getting to about a ninety-five to a ninety-nine percent expenditure rate. That's where we want to be.
Thank you, Jason. Other questions or comments?
I have a vocabulary-based one, and I'm sure it's on a page in here if you'll just point me towards it. What are we calling the average family size here?
Four, I, I go with the, the usual, the, oh, I'm blanking on it right now. Forgive me. The, the group that does the census. It, it's a four-member family that uses three thousand gallons of water and lives in a, in a sixteen hundred square foot house. That's what I'm thinking off the top of my head. I can get that information and provide that for council.
Awesome. Thank you.
So how much are we raising water now?
Two, twenty-nine to seven, fifty-one.
One dollar, so per thousand gallons. So for a family that uses three thousand gallons of water, their water will go up three dollars. And sewer only goes up by twenty-five cents, if I'm not mistaken, right around there. So that will, for that same family, go up seventy-five cents.
The problem I have with sewer, we just hit everybody at three dollars. Then we come right back and raise it again.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's kind of a...
Again, this is to be able to make sure that we have regular rate increases. Now, again, if, if the sewer rate, if you'd like to reduce that or do something different with that, I'm more than happy to, to run those numbers and be able to see. But, but that's again why I wanted to provide you the PSA example. They're going up regularly by seventy-five, eighty cents on a regular basis. That, I, I know we went up very, very high on the sewer side, and so...
I mean, we hit everybody really hard.
Yes, sir.
Because nobody just uses a thousand gallons.
No, sir.
Thousand gallons per person in a household.
Yes, sir.
So that's, you know...
It would be four thousand gallons. Again, it would be four dollars would be the increase on that. So again, that, that for a family of four, again, going up four dollars, this is where, again, I go back to my, my usual example. The Dollar Tree is no longer a dollar. It's a dollar and twenty-five cents. The inflation has hit. The things that we were able to buy before, we have to pay more for going forward. And that, that's not, that's not just individual citizens. That's the town. The town, two-by-fours cost more now than they did before. And so I have to, again, I'm statutorily required to charge a customer service rate that pays for my sewer. I can't have the general fund provide subsidies to the water. And so this is where we're trying to build up to a twenty-five million dollar water and wastewater sewer upgrade. We, we've got to be prepared because in three years, you'll have debt service for that project. And so we need to have that money ready to go. And the sewer has, Ronnie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the sewer fund has had a negative fund balance for quite some time, and we're now getting that back up. And so that's, that's where we're trying to get to a place where we have good financial numbers.
They also told us when we...
They also told us, when we sat through those hours and hours of meetings, that where we've got to be at a certain amount, that if we don't raise it, like a quarter this year, in two years, we're going to be back into that doubling-it situation. I would rather see it go up a quarter each year, rather than to wait three years and hit people with a three-dollar increase again.
Other questions, comments, thoughts, council? Thank you, all of you.
I did want to mention one thing. When we were, as a staff, we were pulling together to talk through some of the questions that we've received with, from citizens and from others. Pool has come up, and I want to make sure that everyone is aware, the town, and Ms. Wick can correct me where if I'm wrong, that the town provides a once-a-year sewer break for those that have pools. So if you go and fill your pool up, I know we're getting ready to move into pool season, so if in May, you go and fill your hundred-thousand-gallon pool up, and you go and spend that money, right now, unless you have a specific water tap just for your pool, you're paying for not only that water, but you're paying for the sewer as well. The town does offer an exemption or a rollback, I forgot exactly what we call it, but where we can look at what your average sewer rate is on those off months, and then give a break to reduce your sewer charge based upon pool usage.
Is that a one-time?
Right, yes, ma'am.
No, I'm for it, if it's every time, because my water bill, and you can look at it, it triples in the summertime.
Yes, sir.
Because we're always putting water in the pool.
Yes, sir.
Then my sewer goes up with us, so, I mean...
So we would be more than happy in September to come in and sit down and chat with you and walk through what it looks like your average sewer is for those off months that you're not using your pool, and then give you a reduction on your bill for that. Again, we're willing to do that. And we have that, again, it's a, it's a currently offered program that anyone with a pool can come in and be able to talk to us around that. We'd be more than happy to do that.
Do we check that, like, if they actually have a pool?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, okay.
If you got a pool, you know it.
Oh, yeah.
You can see it. Mine skyrockets up, then it drops back off just soon as fall hits. You can look at the billing tail, you don't even have to go check.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that, because I know that, again, we're going up a dollar on, on pool. So if you go and fill a hundred-thousand-gallon pool, then you're paying an extra hundred dollars next year to be able to do that, comparatively speaking, to what you would do now. Want to make sure that as you do that, you also have the opportunity to be able to look at a sewer reduction on that.
And they just need to call, that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or come to the front desk, our ladies up front. One more, happy to help.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On page eighty, five-two-five-three-five-zero, Teen Center, was that sixteen-hundred that's proposed? Was that just a carryover from, from what we proposed?
That was a carryover number from previous years, given some of the uncertainty with regards to Teen Center right now. We've kept that budget in place in, in order for us to be able to continue the same support that we have in the past, pending what, what happens with their restructuring.
Well, that was just a one-time deal that we voted on that, to pay the power bill for up to sixteen-hundred dollars.
And if that's the case, I'm more than happy to remove that and place that somewhere else, if that's what the council would like to do.
Yeah, because that's just a one-time deal.
Yes, sir. I will, I can move the sixteen-hundred right there with the plow and spreader, and we can make sure we get that taken care of.
Move to plow and spreader. Counsel. Thank you, Jan. More questions?
I would, I mean, I didn't get my packet till yesterday, so I just ain't had time to look at a lot of it, but as Rick's question, I would like you to see what you can do with the numbers on the sewer, though.
Yes, sir, we will do that.
And we have to raise the water, right?
Yes, sir. In order for the town to continue to receive the low-interest loans and the principal forgiveness for the upgrade projects, we have to increase by five dollars over the next five years. And so that's the rationale. Again, that's about equivalent to what the sewer increase was, a little bit less than what we've increased in November. And again, this is being spread over a five-year period. So it won't be one bill that you'll get and you'll have a very large increase. It will be slow and steady over the course of the year. Again, part of the reason why we wanted to provide the PSA rate schedule, so you can kind of see how they do it, and then it mirrors very similar to what we are trying to propose.
Jason, I have a question. It's on page eighty regarding, it's, the account number is five-two-five-one-six-zero over the Cold Mountain Memorial, budgeted, which is fine. When that was installed, the group of people who did that gave fifty thousand dollars to the town for the maintenance of it, and I didn't know if that's accounted for in here or not.
I am unaware of that. That was simply a carryover line from the past, and we've been spending roughly close to that, so that was a carryover. I can double-check, and Ronnie and I can see if we still have that.
Mr. Harold, Gene Harold presented it.
That is a correct assumption. It's, it's coming out of a, I mean, a restricted find.
It is restricted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I remembered that it was, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did the employee health insurance stay basically the same?
Yes, ma'am, it went up very slightly, but we're, we're fairly constant on that. The VRS did go up, so you'll see a little bit of increase in some of the lines for the retirement. Again, this is where, in past budgets, I've struggled to be able to pull together what the personnel basis was. So what I did was basically go back to the beginning, talk about, forgive the phrasing, but where are butts and chairs, make sure I have those paid for, make sure what the raise would be for next year, make sure that we have an adjustment on the health insurance, on the VRS side, make sure that we have all of that accounted for. And that's, that's, any changes that you see are attributed to those, either the COLA, the increase on the health insurance, or the increase on the VRS. And again, we didn't do it this year, we will start to try to get there next year, but we need to start to increase our VRS contribution in order for us to be able to offer any additional services. Because again, we talked about this, I think, back in January, there was a request to be able to see, can we offer additional services for firefighters, I believe? And at this point in time, we're not able to, just because of our funded status. So we're going to, next year, we're in talks right now with VRS to be able to see how, where do we need to go to be able to get to that seventy percent funded level? That's going to take a little bit of time for us to be able to get that understood. But that's our goal, is next year, to begin starting that, because again, we need to make sure that our, our retirement's fully funded. We have folks that are retiring every day, and we want to make sure that we're honoring our obligation.
The five percent raise for employees, how much money does that take?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that pulled together for you. It was around like a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it was not substantial. But I can pull that and provide that for everyone on council.
I think we'd be better off to just mimic the state every year on that.
And I would love to be able to do that going forward, council member, but my concern is those years where we did zeros, and going forward, again, I would love to be in that place where we mimic, I was talking with someone earlier, most counties will mimic what the state does, because counties have DSS employees, election employees, others that they, that are primarily funded by the state. And in order for them to get the funding, they have to provide that, that state increase. And so in order for DSS workers not to make more oftentimes than sheriff officers do, or to get a larger pay increase, most counties mirror what the state does, because they're getting state funding for their state-funded employees, they match that. And so that's generally the barometer that most counties in Virginia and most towns in Virginia do, is to base that off of what the state does. It gives them a good barometer to be able to do that going forward.
I'd feel a lot better if we did that going forward.
Yes, sir.
Indexing it, I think that would be a way to go, that way we don't want that, this comes up every single year.
Yes, sir.
I think that would just be, set it and forget it.
Yep, and may, again, it also gets to a place where the, where our employees have an understanding of some of the, the work that goes on behind that. It's matched up by the state. We do have a few grant-funded positions and some state-funded positions, and so we're in that same boat, where if I give somebody a five percent raise and somebody else a three percent, we're, we're out of whack with equity at that point in time.
Thank you. Other questions, members of council?
I have another question. It's not specific to the pages in the budget, but what is our water tap and our sewer tap fees?
Forgive me, ma'am, I don't know that off the top of my head. I will tell you, I can pull that and provide that, but let me use this as an opportunity to forecast one of the things that we hope to bring back to you later in the, the late fall, probably early winter. One of the things that we did not get to in this budget, and this is just timing more on, on my end more than anything, is to those rates. We are adjusting the water and sewer rates, because those are attached to our major upgrade programs. But right now, we're charging less than what we're paying for gravel. And so we need to go back in and adjust some of those accordingly. That's a longer process. We're, we're getting ready to start that process of going down the road. We want to look at some of the parks and rec fees, some of the, the hourly rental fees that they pay, and look at some of the, the other fees that we charge, to make sure whether or not, A, we're competitive with the region, and B, that we're charging what it costs for, for us to be able to do the work.
Reason I ask, I was just looking at the PSA fees, and I know they're not anywhere close to those.
Yes, ma'am.
Which was seventeen-fifty for water tap and nine-hundred for sewer.
I think ours is like seven-fifty for both of them, ain't it?
I, I believe that's correct. I don't have that right off the top of my head.
Eleven-hundred dollars.
But...
The water, water tap is eleven-hundred, I don't know what the sewer...
Ours is like seven-hundred-and-fifty for both sewer and water.
I'm looking at the town website, it says eleven-hundred.
Well, they went up.
I don't know about sewer, I'm just looking, it just says water tap.
But, that's kind of crazy in one way, because you want people to move in your town, and if you went up to the seventeen-fifty, I mean, people just don't do that. And it don't...
I wasn't suggesting.
It doesn't cost that much to do a water tap. So, I mean, I'm not for raising that, because that kind of hinders people, period.
Yeah, it's a selling point for the town.
Because, well, they pay for years for this.
Sewer's five-hundred, water's eleven-hundred, sewer's five...
So we're sixteen-hundred, it's crazy.
That's like...
I would also bounce off that. In terms of like the residential security deposit, I would be open in looking if we can get rid of that, because you charge people who move into apartments, generally starting out. So that's where it gets difficult, when you have to put a deposit down when you come open a water account. Is that bad?
I'm sorry, are you talking, you...
So down here where it says residential, residential security deposit, it's a hundred dollars.
That's, that's for the county.
Oh, there we go.
As I say, that's for the county.
Okay.
Again, this is the PSA sheet, this is not ours. I was providing this just to be able to, for comparison purposes.
So do we do a deposit for water?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
How much is it?
I believe it's two-hundred-and-fifty for, but this is where, again, we also have a number of folks that will go and set up water in one name, run that bill up, and then switch it over to somebody else's name and not pay me.
That's unfortunate.
And that's the concern that I have with that. That's the reason that you have deposits, is to make sure, that's why it's two-fifty, because that's the average for water, sewer, electric, and trash pickup for a single person for a month, is my understanding.
Yeah.
We're actually in the process right now, my team and I, going through the utility process from, from very beginning to end. So we brought cutoff date a few meetings ago. And so we're going back to the drawing board. I want to understand, both from, from the very beginning, you know, we make water, we sell water, we distribute it out, people use it, they send the water back to us, we deal with that sewage, and we, we treat that. I want to understand that process from start to beginning, and understand where we have pinch points in it, and make sure that we're doing the best we can for citizens, but also setting, not setting ourselves up...
Yeah.
For, for losing money on this. This is one of the concerns that the, the governor put into, or I'm not sure if he's actually signed it yet or not, I haven't had a chance to check, but there was a push on the electric utility side to lower it, and then to not allow municipalities to cut off electricity for three months. And again, for someone in our town, that, you know, even if they're at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month for electricity, they're at seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars before I can cut them off, and if they've paid me nothing, I'm out, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars with very, very little rationale. The bill also had it, where if they came in and paid me a half payment, I couldn't cut them off. And so there was the opportunity for somebody to come in, pay me twenty-five dollars and keep their water on and their electricity on, and I could be out upwards of sixteen, seventeen-hundred dollars with a bill that I have no way of being able to, to collect on.
So it's similar to eviction laws?
Yes, sir. Again, the, the thing that we have to keep in mind when we're talking about the water and sewer and electric, is that these are enterprise funds. We have to act as though we are a private industry at this point in time. We have to charge what it costs to be able to make the water. And so that, that's the rationale behind it. And then again, want to put the comparisons out there to be able to show, we're, we're still making water for much less than just about anybody. We're making water at such a decrease that the Tazewell County PSA is able to go and sell it for twice what we're selling it to them for.
Yeah.
And so again, that, I just want to make sure that we all are aware of that. Right now, the PSA is charging ten dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand gallons for that, I'm selling it to them for four dollars.
So maybe say, I'm just going to interrupt you and say, security is an operative word?
Yes, sir.
And so, are we a wholesaler to them, essentially?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Will their rate go up?
It is scheduled to go up by thirty-one cents this year, and by thirty-two cents in the following year, yes, sir. And their, their rates on both sewer and on water, again, go up every year as they go through that. Again, that is to be able to combat inflation, to be able to take care of your operations and maintenance, and to be able to keep pace with whatever, where the rest of the, the costs are occurring. I tried today in North Carolina, and Virginia has it, I just can't seem to work it very well, there's a dashboard that the UNC school government does on Virginia water and wastewater. Richlands is not on that, so I'm trying to contact them to see how we can get on to it. Because in North Carolina, I could compare my water and sewer rates with everybody that was around me, and so that's why I've tried to do them with the rate comparison, because again, water and sewer are generally much more regional. I'm paying, I should be paying a reasonable, close amount of money for my water to what folks in Tazewell are paying, or what folks in Lebanon are paying. And so that's, because again, for most people, that's, that's your regional competition. You know, we're, we're, we're low. Again, four dollars is very, very inexpensive for water right now, especially when you compare that to some of the, the larger water utility providers.
Is thirty-one cents up snuff, in terms of like the raise, like how much we're raising it on PSA?
Is thirty-one cents up snuff in terms of like the raise, like how much we're raising it on PSA?
I, that's where we're working through right now. I have a contract with the PSA that is over twenty-five years old, and it deals with the debt service or a debt-funded project that was done. And I'm actually talking to legal right now to be able to get an understanding, can we start this contract over? Because it's twenty-five years old. We have this tendency to do contracts and then just let them go. And so we want to update that, especially given the fact that I'm getting ready to go into a water and wastewater upgrade. I'm getting ready to start a project salmon where I'm going to be selling four hundred thousand gallons of water a day to PSA. I need to sit down and be able to understand not only how we work together now, but how do we work together once we get the upgrades completed? How do we work together once the project salmon comes on board? How do we work together going forward? Because this is, the old contract does not provide an awful lot of guidance for what we're getting ready to go through. And so I very much would like to start talking through contract negotiations.
I would like for it to be equitable, like an equitable relationship.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I want.
I got another question.
Please.
This probably don't contain the budget, but the, when we get the new sewer treatment plant, do we get three new sewer meters, one for Doran, Cedar Bluff, and Baines Bottom?
I don't, I don't off the top of my head know if those are included, but I will tell you that I went back and looked at the contract and the meters that are required in that, the receiver has to pay for those meters. So both Cedar Bluff and Raven would have to pay for those meters to be upgraded. It's not on the town of Richlands. Again, this is where I'm a bit of a contract nerd. I like to read these things. And it says in plain language in one of the sections that that cost is on the receiver of those, of those meters.
Because I think we need three new ones.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what I've looked at, and I've been through it all, I think we need all three new meters, because I think we're losing on typically when the flow is really, really high. And that impacts our citizens more than you really think.
Yes, sir. I and I is one of the things that we're talking through right now, and that's one of the things that I'm talking with both Mr. Shelton and the distribution and Mr. King out at the wastewater treatment facility. That's where we do. I and I for everyone is infill and infiltration. It's when water, other rain runoff gets into your sewer system, and so you're treating storm water as opposed to sewage. And so you end up having to treat more water or more gallons of it than you would normally have to treat because you have infiltration from storm water and others getting into your pipes. We do fairly well with that, but that's something we need to get better about. And that's where, that's where the twenty-five cents comes in to be able to help mitigate some of those costs. Because, again, Duke's root treatment is not inexpensive. And so that's a lot of times what you run through your sewer lines to kill those roots so that they're not messing up your pipes anymore. Again, I'm more than happy to investigate those three meters then.
What are the parameters by which we get to decide when to change them? Like, do we just get a pick when to change them?
Well, all the paperwork I've seen on it, when we have a rainy, we get like two inches of rain, that meter is running over a million gallons. Okay, the same month that we don't get a lot of rain, it's down into a few hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I get that it's probably not tuned correctly. I want it to be replaced, but can we just tell the other entities that they have to spend a thousand dollars?
No, we're gonna have to, we've got a previous. You've got a previous.
Okay.
We'll start pulling those numbers together so that we can have that conversation with our partners.
Jason, on page thirty-one.
The revenue summary. Down on the other revenue. That change, that varies quite a bit from twenty-three to twenty-five, a few million dollars, right? What is other revenue roughly?
Sales taxes, I think it's VDOT's in there, some grants, things like that.
There's a good bit of grant funding that's in there. It is one that, again, it's why it's other. It can be years where we have large amounts of grants that are coming in. It also includes your fund balance allocation, so that's part of what's throwing off your twenty-four number on that is that you had a fairly large fund balance allocation in this year's budget, a little over a million dollars that was included in that. Again, that's where, you know, we trying to get to a place where we have general descriptions for our larger sets of revenues. So talking through property taxes, because property taxes isn't just one line. It's the delinquent taxes, the interest, the fees, all that stuff that goes along with that. This is an attempt to be able to get to a place where we have an understanding of how much real estate, how much other local taxes, how much solid waste, fire rescue. Those larger, general areas of revenue that we bring in, but that is one that jumps around a good bit.
Yeah, that's what I noticed there.
Does that include ARPA and CARES Act?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my next question. ARPA, is, do we still have any ARPA funds?
No, sir.
Or is that into another?
So all of your ARPA funds have been used for personnel expenses in the past, and that has become your unrestricted fund balance at this point. And so if you look, I believe we have financial policies and, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the page. Bear with me one moment.
Can we just clarify? I know Mike's probably going to be like, please don't say ARPA. I don't know the correct, I know what term I want to use that Mike would kill me for saying. But it's not that the ARPA money is gone, right?
Yes.
They said that we can use ARPA for certain things. So what, not just Richlands, and stop me if I'm wrong, but municipalities would use that ARPA money for what they were allowed to use it on while we shifted our money into other things. That's why it's unrestricted now. So technically, no one's really got ARPA money in an ARPA fund at this point. But it's not that that ARPA money has been spent. It's just called something different at this point.
Yes, ma'am. And so that's where it was, we've pushed that to the unrestricted fund balance. And so this is where now you have an unrestricted fund balance that I believe is a little over four million. We're looking at making the recommendation on page twenty-nine in the reserve policy. It talks about the town strives to maintain a general fund balance between twenty-five to thirty-three percent of the previous year's expenditures. And so that's where we're pushing to be able to get the unrestricted fund balance to. Because, again, you, we, last meeting, we went to use unrestricted fund balance to be able to do a roof. That roof was three hundred thousand. If you were to keep your current policy right now, is at ten percent, that would be eight hundred thousand. You would have nearly spent almost half of your unrestricted fund balance on one project had you do that. For smaller towns like Richlands, we want to increase that reserve fund because when things happen, generally they happen to us, and we're by ourselves, and sometimes they can be expensive. Again, we want to make sure that we have a rainy day supply for those, there's issues. Mike has just brought something. The deposits for the utilities, the water and sewer is seventy-five dollars, the electric is two hundred and fifty. And again, those are based upon average month's usage. So, again, we don't want to allow people to go and use excessive electricity, not pay us, and then move that on. That's the reason for the security deposit. I know it's not, again, I've been there. Just finished moving into a place, made the security deposit for it, paying first month's rent, paying all the other things that go along with that. I understand that this is unfortunately one of those situations where the town has to act in the best interest of the utility and be able to go that route.
You have to have that.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, it's unfortunate.
I think, I agree with that. I want to suggest too that when we when we have unpaid bills, ultimately, all people pay for it. Counsel, it's a big book. What are your thoughts, counsel?
Like I said, I'm still looking through it.
Yeah, it's fine, Gary. While we're talking about the current proposed budget, we have a meeting next Tuesday. And Jason, what is the goal for next Tuesday? Continuing with questions?
Yes, sir. When we pulled together our schedule back in January, again, I looked at past, and past is often prologue. You had a number of different budget work sessions last year and the year before that. We wanted to make sure that we offered as many opportunities to be able to answer questions so that the seven of you felt as comfortable as possible when you have to make that vote.
Of course. And I appreciate the calendar you provided. And I think we have, you have a proposed goal to adopt a budget. Was it in May twenty-something?
May twenty-eighth, I believe. Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, not that counsel has to do it, but that is a goal that you set. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And what that does is that allows us to pass this not as an emergency, so that we can pass it before the end of May. That allows the thirty days to take place before the fiscal year starts.
Right. We have done that before. We can pass it at the very last minute. It's very nerve-wracking. Not saying it wasn't justified, but it's nerve-wracking. Okay.
Is the bridge at Lake Park in this year's budget or next year's budget?
It's in this year's budget. The VDOT funds are being used for that, so. And so you'll have a, we are preparing now. I don't think we'll have it ready in May. It will probably be in June. That'll work well for us. We're having a number of budget amendments where you've provided me the ability to move forward with the bridge, the roof, some of the mowing products that we've purchased. We're going to come back in preparations for a year-end audit. We're going to do budget amendments to be able to pull that fund balance and some of those other things in. That'll help us when we do our audit, not show as a negative, to be able to show that we're managing our books the correct way and we're coming in under budget for the year.
Thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate the way you laid the budget out. It's very user-friendly, and it's easy to go through and tell exactly, you know, what we have. So I really appreciate all the effort that went into this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It was a team effort. A lot of these people at this stage deserve as much credit as I give.
I'll echo that. It's, while it's lengthy, it's very clear. If you hunt, you'll find it. Thank you.
So we are cutting the real estate tax two cents?
Yes, sir. So we're going from twenty-one cents to nineteen cents. Yes, sir. I don't believe that this town has cut taxes in well over thirty years. You'll also note that we reduced the personal property tax to zero, as you have abolished that after last year. So, again, looking at the regional rate comparison, you'll see that we are, on the properties tax side, we are right almost at par with what Bluefield is. We're nine cents less than what Abington is. We'll be a penny less than Lebanon, although I think I heard Lebanon just reduced theirs as well in their proposed budget. So I'm not sure how much they reduced theirs. I haven't followed up on that. Marion would be just a little bit less than we will. Tazewell is still ten cents over where we are. And so, again, just a good little bit of comparison there for you.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you, members of our staff. Town attorney, thank you. Other questions?
What was our, what was our personal property tax in Richlands? Does anybody? The personal property was nineteen cents?
I believe so.
It was a hundred and fifty K a year, right?
Yeah, as you say, it wasn't a substantial amount of money. It was only about a hundred and fifty thousand that we were budgeting each year on that. I don't have that right in front of me, but we can, again, we can pull that and provide that to counsel.
Other questions, comments, counsel?
Can you, I mean, I don't need it right now, but can you get that for me?
Yes, sir, we can. And we can also, again, I always like to put this in comparisons on a monthly basis. I work on a budget in my family on a monthly basis. I work on a budget. It's twenty-one cents was what the personal property.
That's what I was thinking. I thought it was higher than nineteen.
Again, I always like to try to look at this in monthly basis, and so we can run those numbers and be able to see what the reduction is for an average family with an average set of cars to be able to show that.
Lebanon took theirs to fifteen, I believe, fifteen or sixteen, but their personal property tax is sixty-five cents. So it's.
Their property tax is twenty, their personal property seventy-five per hundred, seventy-five cents per hundred.
Yeah, I thought it was sixty to seventy something, but they, I think they just.
Bluefield's sixty.
They just lowered their property to like, I think they did it by twenty-five percent. It was twenty-five. Real property.
So really, if you sit here and look at the budget, when we took that tax off for personal property, we probably saved as much as what it's going up this time.
You're right. And in fact.
Then we lowered the property tax down to nineteen from twenty-one. So that's not a whole lot, but it is when you're on a fixed income and you're trying to figure this out. So by us reducing the personal property tax or doing away with the personal property tax, lowering the real estate tax, we probably are still breaking even with what we done.
Probably more, more so, especially on that personal property, because the values have went up, again, and even in real property. So you're right, Rick. It kind of offsets.
So it's about a even deal, but we're gaining a pool splash pad.
Trading one for the other.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done is really just trade it.
New trash truck.
And we're not reducing services. We're going to increase what we offer, such as a pool and other things that we're doing. We're increasing the value of the town to our citizens.
Well, we're at a pretty good point. We're at a pretty good point. We've had a new town manager for six months. We've moved giant steps. Instead of baby steps, we've took giant steps pretty fast. I mean, if you sit here and do the math, like I was just doing, that's the reason I needed that, that twenty-one, you know, if you own thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of personal property, that's more than six dollars. Six dollars or something, whatever we said it was a month. But it's actually more than that because it's based on per thousand gallon. So that it's actually four, four times that. So it's twenty-four, so you're still really close.
I think that six dollars is based on, because one of them only went up, the sewer went up twenty-five, twenty-five cents per one thousand gallons for sewer rates, so that's equating to a sixty-five cent increase for the average household utilizing twenty-five hundred gallons.
The thing that you got to really watch is the people on fixed incomes, the way their paycheck goes up. It's not that much. You can make these people stumble and fall very quickly here if you're not very careful what you do. So we're really not doing that much to change anybody's livelihood where they either have to think about eating or they got to think about medicine. That's one place we don't want to get. So, I mean, I think we're okay. The one thing I'd really like to do is I'd like to go ahead and fix the raises where we just mimic exactly what the state's doing every year, and you don't have to worry about that.
Hundred percent.
I think this.
I mean, it still ain't fair. No, it's not. But it's fair across the board to everybody, you know.
I think Jason had a thought on that, didn't you, Jason?
He did.
Just for awareness and context, the social security is going up by three point five percent. That equates for someone that did receive fifteen hundred dollars in benefits before, will receive forty-eight dollars more a month for that increase. So that would be more than enough to cover the six dollars that would be coming for this. So anybody that is on social security. So anybody that is on social security, again, understand fixed incomes. That's why I always want to put this in perspective of a monthly budget amount, because many of our citizens, they receive their social security payments and that's, that's their income for the month. So this, again, that's why I always want to be lower than what that social security cost indexed is, so that we make sure that we are cognizant of what the citizens, especially those that are on fixed incomes.
And the math on the, the increases is the state has an average of four point five seven percent. We've averaged three percent over the past, one, two, three, four, seven years. So if we do five percent this year, it will put us in a position to mimic the state next year and be on, on the same track.
Is it any bonuses, Jason?
No, sir. There, I believe we provide a small bonus at Christmas historically, but there's been no bonuses involved at this point in time.
I just generally pull the council. It doesn't mean we're ending. Laura, any thoughts at this particular time that you want to share?
I just want to reiterate that I appreciate how you, how you did it. Very self-explanatory. There was nothing in here really that I questioned, just because when I did have a question, I would flip to the next page and you already had it answered. For me personally, you've put a lot of where I believe my values lie with taking care of citizens, streets, providing more benefits to citizens and the town employees, so.
Thank you, Laura. Gary, any thoughts here from you, my friend?
Not right off. I mean, I would like to see more in paving while I'm sitting there. And the sewer rate, with Rick and him on the mocking the state on the, you know, and the rest of it's pretty much trading apple for apple.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've got something else.
Interrupted you, Gary. Edit me, too.
I'm good.
Rick?
Okay. We're doing three hundred and fifty thousand worth of paving a year. How much do we get from VDOT?
Right now, we're receiving one point three million and some change, if I remember correctly.
Three hundred and fifty thousand a year is a mile and a half of paving. Is that enough to cover what we need to do? I mean, that's why we got in the situation. And I was on the council the last time that we started, then we just quit paving.
And that's, I'm putting three hundred and fifty right now, but that's in, that's what we're budgeting year over year. We still have our restricted fund balance. My, my goal is to pull the restricted fund balance, the VDOT money that we still have, and to be able to buoy that up and slowly, over the next few years, get to about a half a million. A half a million, if we're just doing top coats, if we're not milling, if we're, we're just doing slurry coats and topping that, I think we can get a little bit more than a mile and a half out of about a half a million. I'm hoping we should be able to get three, four miles out of that. That gives us the ability to start in sections of neighborhoods and be able to catch up on that. That, that's our goal.
Now, that's just asphalt's when I'm talking, just asphalt. I'm not talking slurry. Slurry, you'd probably get ten miles
Yes, sir.
Out of three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, sir. And that's, that's where, again, and, and I will defer to you. I know you're, you're much more experienced in this. My driving around the town, we have Farmer Street that needs to be repaved. Birmingham probably needs to be repaved at some point in the near future, maybe a few years out. I think that one's not as bad. Farmer's not good. There is a section in the Dalton addition that I think needs to be done, East Second Street, some of those areas over there. We, Front and Second Street, we're trying to work with VDOT to be able to get those moving. We have some other neighborhoods within the town to be able to do it, but there's not really large roads that will need to go and do several miles worth of milling and paving. Again, that, that's where we're, we're getting ready to start go through a pavement process to be able to understand what is the next piece that needs to be paved, because we'll, we will blink a couple of times, we'll be in November where we're going to be able to do the RFP on this.
Doing worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir. Looking at the worst first to be able to get those done. Again, what we want to be able to do is get to a place where I don't have to fill near as many potholes as we have right now. But that's, again, we're, we're trying to get there. This is a, a slow process. I know that can be frustrating from time to time. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a, a good start. I'm not saying that's where I want to be going long-term, but that's where I, I want to start.
Is that town street? The three hundred and fifty is in town streets or?
VDOT.
It's, it's V, it's for all of the roads. So I can, I can do both VDOT. That's one of the things we're getting ready to do is sit down with VDOT.
See, because we're splitting money.
But, but the, many of the town roads should be converted to VDOT roads, at least from my opinion. We need to go back and sit down with VDOT and be able to go through what are the town roads and what are the, the VDOT-approved roads? Because there's, there are several that I, that are on the town side that I think need to be moved over, and I don't think we've done that for
I tried to do that last time I was on council.
Yes, sir.
And where we had a problem, we don't have the right-of-way for VDOT to take them.
Yes, sir.
We've only got a thirty-foot right-of-way and they want fifty-foot, then we're in somebody's house.
Yes, sir. So that, that's where we're trying to work through that. But the, this is where we can, we, we, we want to make sure that we're using that money to pave the best that we possibly can. This is, it's a work in progress. We, we've got to catch up, but, but I want to do it right, so I don't have to give any money back.
The three hundred and fifty, so could we spend that in July?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we are paving.
Yes, sir. Talk to WNL, I think earlier today, looking at the first of May is when we're, we're trying to get them out there. I have conveyed to, to our paving company that everyone on this council and everyone that is on Facebook and everyone else that has talked to me would very, very much like to see Kent's Ridge paved and Virginia Avenue paved. And so we, we've tried as best as we possibly can to convey that to them, that we have, again, I drove through Kent's Ridge today, the, some of those potholes are back. And so we're getting ready to start patching it and be able to go through that.
Jason, I think those have been scheduled for the, Virginia Avenue and Kent's Ridge.
Those, those are the ones that we're looking at, the first of May, of trying to get those back.
So what I'm saying is the pa, the slurry pavers are coming in.
Yes, sir.
Because they're hauling stone to Buchanan County.
Yes, sir.
So they'll be in Tazewell County probably in July.
Okay.
So maybe we need to meet with them and talk to them and see what they would do.
Why, they're in town.
Yeah.
I'd be more than happy to. Again, if we hold to the plan and you pass budget on May the twenty-eighth, then starting from that date, you've approved that budget, I can't spend the money until July one. That doesn't mean I can't do an RFP and start that process so that July one, we can go and spend money.
If we would do that, it would change our road dynamics here just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Because we would get country ridge and Virginia Avenue, then we would turn around and we could hit some of the bigger things.
Yes, sir.
Not like Front Street and Second Street, because I know we're wanting to change that whole, the whole looks of that area.
Yes, sir. VDOT's working on those plans right now.
But like the road, like the road that circles around the rec park.
Yes, sir.
Like the road that circles around Town Hall.
Yes, sir.
See, we could get them already done.
Yes, sir. And, and that's where we can work in conjunction with our streets team, because I, I had a couple of citizens call me at the end of last week to talk about Sixth Street, because there's a number of potholes over there that we're getting ready to try to go work on. If we go and fill those potholes and then we follow that right up with slurry coats on top of that, then, then now we've got freshly paved. The, the only process that I, I want to make sure that we inject into this, and we have both on Virginia and on Kent, is I'm working with Mr. Shelton to make sure that we can get all of those, those service lines done. You, you may have noticed them, Virginia Avenue, I think they had water, water outages last week, because we're fixing those service lines. When I go pave this, I don't want to cut that again for years, because the worst thing you can do, I, I know I'm preaching to the choir on the left-hand side here, is to be able to pave a road and then go do a utility cut right after it, because all that does is mean in five years, you're going to have puddles, because you've put a cut into that asphalt as opposed to just letting it go. So that's the other piece that we just need to coordinate, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
But slurry seal ain't as bad as asphalt.
No, sir.
I mean, you can patch it back pretty soon.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, the, I'm for that.
Yes, sir. That's, that's where, we, we're, again, and I, I understand, believe me, I, I can, I, I understand that there's a, a push to want to fix the problems that we have been faced as a town for numbers of years, that we want to get those fixed now. I, I am, I'm trying very hard to be able to move as quickly as we possibly can, but understanding we want to do it right the first time. That, that's the key to this is, is that, you know, it's, we, we've had to make sure we get all these service lines put in. We're, we're, we want to make sure that we're methodical in our process and we do this once, because I, I don't have the ability to do it twice. And I need to be able to do it once and have it done, and I need to be able to purchase, you know, a, a piece of equipment and use it in three or four different places. That's what we're trying to do with the work truck for the mowers. That's the plow and the spreader, is to be able to come back in. That's another truck that not only do I use for mowing, but also use for snow removal. And that, that's where we're trying to get to. But your point's well taken, Rick.
I think the key is sticking with our plan and not
It is.
Calling by the wayside, but we have a plan to do this and we need to stick with that.
I happen to agree, and I'm listening very carefully, and Rick, you know much about paving than probably anybody up here, I'm suggesting, but I think we're all on the same page. If you follow the plan A, B, C, D, you don't have to go back and do things that create more cost and less efficiency and less service to the citizens.
Every dollar that I have to go back and redo something is a dollar that I can't go and either provide new services or enhance services that we're currently providing. That's, again, where we want to be able to get. One of our strategic pillars is efficient and effective government. We're, we're working right now to be able to gain efficiencies through technology. I'm looking at shared Excel files as having to print out work reports every day. There, there are little things that we are putting in place now that I know oftentimes citizens can't see, but citizens are going to bear the benefit of in three, four months when we get those processes and, and procedures in place, because they're not going to have to come and fill three different forms to be able to get a permit. They're going to be able to come and do that once. I want to be able to get that online, so that they can do it online and don't have to come to Town Hall. But that's, that's a process. I have to get the IT equipment in place. I have to train staff on that. We have to have policies and procedures to be able to do that, because, again, I just want to do it once, and I want to be successful when we get to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick, and thank everyone. Any further questions from council, for Jason or any one of our staff?
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, members of council? So next week's goal is to entertain more questions, comments, thoughts. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And we will also pull back and bring the information on the meters, information on the personal property taxes. We will have updates on a couple of the, the teen center and my salary getting moved around. And we'll have a, I think there was one other question that I did not get written down, but we'll get that information. We'll try to provide that in advance of Tuesday so that you have the opportunity to review that and have questions for us on Tuesday. We're more than happy to answer any questions in the interim. Any information that you would like to have us pull and be prepared to be able to provide on Tuesday, as, as long as you're able to give us a little bit of a heads up, we're more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'm sorry. Are we still good with the public hearing? Do you need us to set that at some point or?
At some point, Tom, we do need to set a public hearing. Yes, I would defer to Mike.
Yeah, there won't need to be, for any rate increase, there will need to be a public hearing. And of course, if you're reducing one, you don't technically have to have one, but if you want to advertise that you're lowering something too, that's just going to, I mean, might help you.
It's information.
But you guys are watching the deadline, so we can
Yes, ma'am.
Potentially vote in May on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm thinking, Mike, would, that's a good question. Would it be behoove us, or you can let us know, to do this at our May meeting?
So if you want to, yeah, it would probably need, it would need to happen in the May meeting. And that would, wouldn't be when we do a first reading, of course, a second reading in June. You would, you would have to propose or adopt that as an emergency measure, just because it would have to be read at two regular meetings?
Two regular meetings, I, okay.
That's for the rate increases.
Okay. Good point. Other thoughts and questions, members of council?
So even right now, you're saying we're going to be in June?
Well, your next regular meetings are May and June.
Can we have a special meeting?
Under the charter, it has to be at two regular meetings unless waived. I mean, you can waive that second reading like we usually do, but
Can we schedule?
Can you waive this? I'm sorry, Laura. Go ahead.
Can we, because technically, you can add in another regular meeting, right? If we were to advertise that right now, rather than calling the meeting three days before, yeah? So could we add another regular meeting in May and go ahead and advertise it?
That's one of those, a regular meeting, it's really, you, you leave it up to, people are going to think a regular meeting is the second Tuesday at six o'clock is your regular meeting of every month. It really depends on how you're going to define regular. If you all are okay with doing that, you could throw one in there and call it a regular meeting, just with the understanding that if somebody disagrees with what regular means, it's open to contesting.
Yeah, Laura, I follow your thinking, and I have a, my question is, we don't want to put out anything that is contrary to the charter. I, I, we've read that regular meetings and anything else is not regular. So I have a thought, if we are in our May meeting, if we have a public hearing and a first reading, could we waive the second reading?
Yeah, I think you could waive that.
If council is, is in agreement to that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The only thing is, is you aren't able to adopt it the same day as the public hearing.
Has to be thirty days, from the day to the public hearing?
I think it's seven.
Seven days?
Seven days.
Okay. So our May meeting is whatever that it is, and if, if this is what, how council chooses to act, to have an ordinance ready to be read, a public hearing, is that correct? And ordinance ready to be read?
That would be at the, May. And you can do the first reading at that same time.
First reading in May, and can we, even though some of these things might, well, I don't know about that. I have to rely on you, Mike. I'm trying to think about this. When it comes to, to anything that's raising the ordinance, can you dispense with the, the second reading?
Yeah. Let me sign out here. I believe you can if it's adopted by two, at least two-thirds of the council.
Let us do this. I, I just want to clarify that. Maybe you should get back.
I was just saying, if, if we can, we're pulling together next Tuesday. My team and I will pull together. We will offer a couple of different timelines for council at Tuesday's meeting, and we can answer questions. We'll have, we'll be ready to answer any questions.
We want all the legalities in perfect order.
We'll have that all ready. Let, let us get our proverbial ducks in a row, if you will, and then we can come back together, walk you through your options to be able to do that.
I think that's great.
And again, if we have to move to a June, then we have to do that and we'll move forward.